Look, everybody, it's a call to order the July 10, 2025 regular meeting of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education to order at 6:35. I'd like to invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you are willing and able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That brings us to item number three this evening, which is our standing approval items. Item 3.1 is the acceptance of the agenda. Do I have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? I may have one. I do have one. Under Section 5, Recognitions and Presentations, I would like to add a small presentation to Superintendent Fitzpatrick. Are there any objections? Hearing of the agenda as amended is accepted. Item 3.2 is approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes listed. Trustee Jusinski.
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes, June 26, 2025, regular minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Trustee Alexander, is there any discussion on the motion? See now, call for vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Item four tonight is public comments. Anybody from the audience who wishes to speak? We do, okay. I'll read the rules then. A person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place a card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and we appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from the public comments shall be referred to the superintendent or they're designated for review, study, and possible future response. We thank you in advance for your cooperation. And we have Mr. Dalton.
Hi, everybody. I'm Grant Dalton. I'm here as an individual, but also as the executive director who helped bargain the contract that you're going to vote on later in the agenda. I wanted to just, number one, thank you for your service. I did a little bit of research today. So out of 238 million Americans who could sign up for what you do, you are less, you represent less than zero, or point 0002 of them who do your work voluntarily for communities across the country. And it's not an easy job, and I want to thank you for putting your name on the ballot whenever you did so, and I appreciate your work. I just want to quickly talk about the TA that you're going to, I couldn't be prouder to talk to you tonight. When we started bargaining on 3-4, March 4, we took a few minutes in this very room with a bunch of people that represent a large part of your organization, central office, lots of my members, building administrators, an attorney, me, right? And that can be in a very imposing process, right? So we started something a little different this year that I think really worked well for us, and I wanted to share that with you. So we asked each other, what are your core values? What is it, what is it that makes you tick? What is it that in your darkest day, or when the clouds come, you have to go to? And so we listed them, and I'm going to share them with you. And before I share them with you, I just want to let you know that after we did that on a piece of chart paper over here before, we had passed one proposal back and forth, we identified that every single one of us around that room shared those same, those same core values. I'm going to just read them to you, okay? Commitment, protecting families, kindness, appreciation, mentorship, integrity, common good, bargaining for the common good, protecting kids, tolerance, equal opportunities, honesty, open-mindedness, being fiscally responsible. And every single one of us at that room, regardless of what side of the table they were on, it wasn't really a table, we'd sit in a circle, but shared those. And we went through every one, and every single one of us said, yep, I should, that's one of my core values too. Oh, yep, that's one of my core values too. And it was really, really powerful for our work. Didn't mean that our work was easy by any stretch of the imagination. It was hard work. It was honest work, and it was, I think, really fruitful for this community and for my members and for you as a board. I'm just super, super proud of that. And that is not always the case at a bargaining table, right? We make strange bedfellows, as you know, right? Just because I work for a union, it doesn't mean that I don't share these same core values when I'm in the community that I love and live in, just like you do. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I think moving forward in the next three years, that's going to be really important as those winds of change and those winds of misunderstanding continue to come your way as point 0003 of the population in the United States who has the ability to voluntarily make their communities better. And that work is, I think, going to continue and will carry us. So I appreciate you, and I'm hoping that tonight when you vote on my TA, it'll be unanimous. That's it. Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the board? See now, we move on to item five tonight, which is Recognitions, Presentations, and Reports. And Mary Beth will make a very quick, the presentation is passing these down the table to Mary Beth. It's a gift from the board and another gift from the district itself. It's really rare to open gifts in public, so you don't need to do that if you don't wish to. Bring us to item six tonight, which is Communications. Secretary Anderson.
We have hit, have received zero communications since our last meeting. I did want to mention we have our student reps here, which we're so happy to see you here. Would you want to tell us how your summer's going? And introduce yourselves, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Alani Hamilton. I am a rising senior. I have done something every day this summer, and I've made my own little senior journal about it, and that's how my summer is going.
Hi, my name is Grace Hatton, and I'm an upcoming senior this school year. My summer has mostly been spent with my family, my friends, and then working as well. It's been a pretty good summer so far.
All right, thank you both. This is item seven tonight, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda generally consists of routine matters as well as items we've covered during this meeting or another board committee meeting. All items are documented in the minutes which are published following the meeting at which they were approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public, and public comment is an item on each agenda. We invite members of the public to join our committees. Is there any additions or deletions to tonight's consent agenda? See now, Consent Agenda is passed as presented. Move on to item 8.1 this evening, which is the Superintendent's Report. Start with Superintendent Fitzpatrick.
I was just gonna say, that is a plural possessive reference there, so. You get a couple. So 8.1, 0.1 on your agenda tonight is the second reading of the revised, replaced, or recommended policies and guidelines. As you know, and as we've spoken about before, policies are reviewed by members of the board through a committee process, as well as myself and fellow administrators, and Neola is our professional partner. And tonight's list represents policies that we have reviewed, we've asked questions about, we've taken a look at our practices and protocols to match those policies. And then the second reading tonight, if approved, would then move those policies into our permanent policies, and those are available online through our website as well. So that is, the recommendation is for your consideration.
I think I have a motion for 8.1.1. Okay.
So I actually just have a question. We use Neola, and I saw M A S B come out with the recommendation of a different company besides Neola. Yeah, through, yes, is there any thoughts in regards to that, or maybe not at this time yet?
Not at this time. There's a recognition that it's conducted in different ways in different districts, and if there's a reason to consider something else, it's certainly your prerogative to do so as a district.
And do we have a motion?
Did you want me to do the motion too?
Sure.
Resolve that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the second reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and/or recommended as presented with the listing as provided.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Trustee Cook, is there any discussion on the motion before us? See now, a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
The second item that I have for you is just a little update on it. I was able to be a part this week, a pretty unique opportunity, actually, and a really nice way to round out the end of my 39-year career in public ed. But I was invited to be a part of a panel on the discussion of federal cuts in a town hall setting that was held in Troy. It was chaired by Sharon McDonald, Representative McDonald, Natalie Price, Rep. Price was also there, along with our state senators, Chang and McMorro. And I represented a voice of public education. I certainly did not speak for all of public education, but certainly just to share my views on the impact of what could occur and what will occur in the uncertainty that occurs. I was very happy to see Ms. Cook there, as well as Dr. Tofolsky. We had the Mental Health Association of Michigan, Easter Seals and Morck, Samaritas, Michigan Assisted Living Association, the Disability Network of Eastern Michigan, as well as our legislators. And I think we estimated at one point over 100 folks in the room that night. It was really just to give a perspective to the public on what the cuts that they read about in the paper mean to people and organizations such as ours. At one point during my, I think I had four minutes, I shared that the word uncertain had been used four or five times at the table that evening on speakers that had gone before me. But the one thing that's absolutely certain is that 5,000 students will walk through the door the last week of August, and we need to be ready, whether we have a balanced budget or our budget from the state of Michigan or not. Our legislators know us. They know from us in K-12 ed that we want our budgets, you know, sooner than later. We would have liked them by now. We are required to have a balanced budget presented and approved by this board by July the 1st, even though we still have no numbers from this firm from the state of Michigan. However, they also are living the uncertainty of what's coming down from the federal government. And so, you know, living that and speaking, you know, toward that, it's real families and children who are worried about whether or not the services they're used to and that they need to thrive and achieve will be there for them in our public education system in Michigan. So it was a great opportunity to be a part of. I'm sure Dr. Tofolsky will continue that advocacy. I will as well as I carry on a related position in K-12 education in the state of Michigan in my retirement. And so, but I was very thankful for the opportunity to be able to do that and represent Royal Oak Schools. And I would take any questions you might have. Thank you.
I think, I think Superintendent Fitzpatrick is underselling what, what she said there just by giving you a synopsis, and it was, she was truly smart and funny, but also serious and passionate, and I think that showed, and it was an excellent representation, not only of Royal Oak Schools, but also of a leader who is serious and who understands the repercussions of what is happening, both in Lansing and in Washington. And so I think it really set the tone for the meeting where there was a lot of, oh, it's uncertain, we're not sure what's going to happen. And she said, but what is going to happen is 5,000 kids are coming, and they're going to be of all abilities and, and all different types of students, and we are going to take them, and we are going to educate them, and we are going to welcome them, we are going to love them. And it was just, it was a, it was a wonderful event, and I was happy to be able to be there to witness the event. And I think the advocacy, the community advocacy was really good, too. Like, when we walked in, there, there was not an open seat in the house. And I think that that is really great when you see people in our community going out and advocating and saying, we're not happy with what's going on right now, but we want to stay informed, and we want to understand the issues that are facing us.
I would echo what Dr. Tofolsky was saying, that Superintendent Fitzpatrick was very polished and really got across, you know, the, the commitment that we all have to our students. One thing that I want to bring up, just because I think that folks may not, when they hear Medicaid and they hear about Medicaid cuts, they may not think of that as something that could impact schools. But I just want to make people aware that we do get reimbursed through Medicaid for many services that the school provides to students, like speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and the like. And so those are impacts that, again, we're uncertain of what level of impact that may have to our school district.
Any else? Thank you, superintendents.
Just quickly, I, I had the opportunity to meet with a joint committee in, you know, a month of firsts, I'm sure, and not last, certainly. And that was a unique experience. I had not done that before. So Mal and Carrie and Grant were there, and it was just an absolutely wonderful evening to be able to meet with them and Pat and Mary Beth. And I just appreciated that. Again, I appreciate the warm welcome. And then one of the really great things that I got to experience this weekend was the maintenance barbecue, and it was awesome to see the hardworking men and women that are driving our students and cutting the lawns and making sure that the buildings are in tip-top shape. Like, there is nothing like the fresh smell of wax when you're walking through the building in the middle of the summer as we're getting ready. And it was awesome to see them be able to take a minute and, you know, receive a quick break and some delicious ribs. As I will say, Ms. Bella and Mr. Y, Dr. Yuanis went, went over there, too. So that, well, those were, those were two highlights of my week. And so I appreciate everybody who worked hard on the union contract, and I think it's, and then again, the joint committee and the maintenance barbecue were outstanding.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Tofolsky? See now, move on to item 8.2 this evening, which is Curriculum and Instruction. I'll turn this over to Dr. Yuanis.
Thank you, President Tofolsky. I appreciate that. It's been a wonderful experience having two bosses, let me tell you. I just want to share that that has been exciting and challenging. And no, it's been great. So I'll go ahead and give us a couple of quick updates. I want to give a summer school update. Our first, we have two sessions that run June 23, July 10 for elementary students. That first session completed today with about 115 students enrolled, and our second session begins July 14 and runs to July 31. Our middle school, we weren't able to capture enough student interest at the middle school level to generate a program there, but we're going to continue to work on ways that we can maybe have some small camp sessions next year that might engage some of our middle school learners. And then at the high school level, we have a credit recovery summer program with about 21 students that are taking part in recovering that credit to help get them back on track. So those programs will continue. The high school credit program runs throughout the summer, half-day sessions there. So we're excited about those opportunities for all of our kids. I'll give a quick Cognia School Accreditation Progress update. We talked a little bit about it before, and I'll have a more detailed presentation in the next month. But we had our Cognia accreditation visit May 7, and we recently received notification as of July 1 that Royal Oak Schools was awarded with a highly regarded accreditation from Cognia that is really regarded and recognized throughout the world. So we should be very appreciative and thankful for that. Just as a quick update, there's four key characteristics that school institutions are being evaluated on through the accreditation process. Culture of learning, leadership for learning, engagement of learning, and growth in learning. So in about four to six weeks, Dr. Tofolsky and myself will receive a little bit more detailed report from Cognia to give us some more input and feedback regarding on steps that we can take to improve. Our internal team has already identified some areas that we believe will align with what the report will detail for us for the coming years. But I just wanted to share that as of July 1, we're officially accredited, and Cognia is about, serves about 36,000 institutions across the country, across 80 different countries. So it's the primary accreditation system for our schools. And I'll have, hopefully, a more detailed report if we get that information for August. If not, I'll have something in September that Dr. Tofolsky and I can work on and look at before the next meeting. But those are all I have, unless there's any questions.
See now, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I have a, okay. It sounds really exciting about the accreditation that we just got. Is, what kind of evaluation of the, is it an evaluation of the entire school district that they do, or is it material that we prepare for them, or how do we get that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So there, those four key characteristic areas are what are the lens that they use to assess school districts and institutions. So we had to submit a lengthy packet of information with resources and data to kind of show how we were supporting students in those four areas. And then they took that information, which included data, program information, feedback surveys from stakeholders. They take all that information. We had a presentation. They did a virtual onsite visit with Superintendent Fitzpatrick and our team. And then they took all that information. We had basically a large homework assignment throughout this school year to generate that information for them and kind of collect it. And of course, we had our administrators and teachers at the buildings that helped support by providing feedback, and really also helped in supporting the programs and initiatives that we've had going on. So yeah, there was a lengthy kind of submission of our packet of information that had multiple links and a lot of resources and information. So we're excited to get their report back and kind of see what they have. They've given us some initial feedback on some areas that we had talked about before, and we, we feel like more of the feedback will align with some things that we have identified internally that we have to improve on through the continuous improvement process.
Thanks. I, as a relatively new board member, this kind of thing makes me pretty excited. So I'm glad.
Thank you, yeah.
It's coming as well.
Yeah.
Trustee Jusinski.
Yeah, not a question, but just huge thanks to you and the team. I know it takes a lot of man-hours from our staff to put those things together. And, you know, we know we do a really, really nice job, and we showcase that every month here to the community. But those kinds of outside validation, you know, kind of official support of that us all being on the right track is really, really important, and luckily not something we have to do every single year.
Yes. Every five years.
Right. But, but yeah, that's a huge lift. So, so thank you for all the time that went into that and to the rest of the staff that helped compile it.
Thank you. See no other comments. Move on to 8.3 tonight, which is Finance Facilities and Bond.
Thank you. I also have a couple of quick updates tonight, and I will echo Dr. Yuanis. It is interesting having two bosses. The nice thing about it is if you can't find one, you can generally find the other. So that has been helpful over the last couple of weeks. I, that has been helpful for me, at least. I want to thank you for your hard work on the budgets that we got passed just two weeks ago. That was a lot, that was a heavy lift for the board, for cabinet, for the administration of the district. There were many people that worked on those. They're complete, and they've been loaded into our finance system and onto Muntrix. For anybody who's interested to look at them, all of them are loaded as well. Finance has now turned their focus to the audit. Our auditors will be here in just a short time. They'll be here on July 28. We, we in Royal Oak Schools generally go very early with the audit. We like to get that out of the way because before you know it, the students are back, and we have to go ahead and get started with that first teacher pay. So there's always something rolling. So getting that audit out of the way so that we can move into the next school year is always the best way to go. I mentioned a little bit earlier, there is no state budget yet, so we've passed that with uncertainty in our funding sources, with our best assumptions. So right now, we don't have any, I don't have any updates on the state budget right now. We had our finance facilities meeting just a little bit ago, and Jeff Sinowick, our operations manager, mentioned that the summer work is going along quite well. He expects to have everything done, all the extra projects prior to students coming back, so that's very encouraging, as well as the building site sinking fund work that's going on, the parking lot at Royal Oak Middle School, the roof at Royal Oak High School. There's boiler work at Royal Oak High School. While we have a little bit of a logistical problem getting a few items, we still believe that we will have everything ready for students at the end of August. I've also met with Lisa McCall, who is our custodial manager, and she said that the crews are working very hard to make sure the buildings are clean for students. And she's feeling really good about where we're at already this summer and getting the building work done. Are there any questions for me this evening? All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. 8.4 this evening is Staff and Student Services, and we'll turn this over to Mr. Wolinski.
Thank you, Mr. Johorsky. I have two items on the agenda for your approval this evening, and then I'll share with you, as I always do, a brief enrollment update. I'll start with item 8.4.1, which is our list of personnel changes since we last met. And on that report, you will see 17 changes, which is not unusual for this time of year. This is our busiest time of year for resignations, retirements, and new hires. So I'll go through those quickly. Of those 17 changes, nine are recommendations for hire, which is excellent. We're on real good track to be fully staffed on the first day of school. As I keep saying what Ms. Fitzpatrick said, ready or not, kids are coming the first day of school, whether we're fully staffed or not, but I believe we will be. The report also includes five end-of-year resignations and three layoffs. I'll talk about that briefly. The five resignations come from two paraprofessionals, two teachers, and one secretary. But four of those five positions have already been filled, and those recommendations for hire are on the report. We still need to fill one of the secretary positions, which recently became vacant. The three layoff notifications are a result of some restructuring of our elementary special schedule and just some efficiencies that came as a result of that restructuring as well in class sizes and student assignment to classes. Our, okay, I'll talk about our recommendations for hire. So there's nine of them. One is for a physical therapist at the Early Childhood Center. We've recently offered positions to three We've recently offered positions to three classroom teachers, four paraprofessionals, which is excellent. We're always in need of paraprofessionals. And one administrator, who I'd like to introduce at this time. His name is Derek Smith. Derek, if you would, come on up to the table here because I'm going to put you on the spot.
Thank you. Did not expect that.
Derek is our recommendation for the position of Director of Athletics and Activities. As you know, that position became vacant when Daniel Russell announced he was resigning back in May. He just resigned at the end of the school year. And through a lengthy process of screening quite a few applicants, three rounds of interviews, presentations, input from a lot of different stakeholders, Derek clearly rose to the top, and I would say pretty unanimously as someone who fit the criteria we were looking for. Just a little bit about Derek, and he can add to this. Derek is a product of Royal Oak Schools. He's a graduate of Don Darrow High School. I'll let him share what year that was if he wants to. He attended Grand Valley State University, right? And where he earned a bachelor's and later a master's degree in educational leadership from Saginaw Valley State University. Derek has been a teacher and athletic director for Utica Community Schools for 23 years, filling both roles at the same junior high. And when I called about his references, I mean, they spoke so highly of him and just raved about him as a person and as an employee. And the people that know Derek from Royal Oak feel the same way. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge it as well. Kristen Smith is a teacher of ours at Adams. I told him in his interview, you should have led with that. But anyway, couldn't be more excited to recommend Derek for this position. I think he's going to be excellent.
Well, thank you. I didn't, you stole a lot of my thunder, actually, you know? But, yeah, I'm really super excited to return home, to be quite honest. Class of '96. I heard it go Oaks back there. But, yeah, so born, born, raised, reside here. I'm just super, super, super excited to have the opportunity that you guys quite honestly gave me. I think there's a tremendous potential untapped, quite honestly, within our students, within our community, to bridge those gaps, to have more successful activities in athletics at the high school. And I think if we do that, if I do that together, that the end result is a student that goes through our school system that graduates better off than how they started, I guess is the lack of a better way to say it. And that's ultimately what we want as teachers, as board members, as community members, as parents. And that's my goal, and that's what drives me. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys, administration, coaches, teachers, community members, to make that happen. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Am I dismissed?
Yeah, you can.
So, Derek's employment is part of item 8.4.1, is recommended.
I'm sorry, Derek, did you want to introduce who we brought with you?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, Kristen Smith. And this is Tyler. He's a current, soon-to-be eighth grader, right, at Rom's Middle School. So, this is Tyler, our youngest son, Jackson, who is at a baseball game right now. He's a current sophomore at Royal Oak Schools. My family.
Thank you.
Okay, that is item 8.4.1 for your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for 8.4.1? Trustee Alexander.
Resolved. The Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the regular personnel changes as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Trustee Van Heitzma.
I was just going to make a comment. Welcome, Derek. And I know we're, the community, I've heard so much support already from the community. I think that's amazing. And we're just so glad to have you here and back home. So, thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
I'll echo Trustee Van Heitzma and say, welcome back. And we're really glad the community roots, I think, will serve you well. And we're really excited that you'll be working in our district.
Trustee Wiki.
I really don't want to steal your thunder, but I'd like to say that your wife has taught at least one of my daughters in school, possibly two, so. Yeah.
What school was that? I'm so sorry.
I don't really remember, but yeah.
I think it was Adams, yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Do we have a call for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Miller. Mr. Smith. All right, back to Mr. Wolinski.
Okay, thank you. I have another item on tonight's agenda for your consideration for approval, and that is item 8.4.2, which is a recommendation for the approval of our already tentatively agreed-upon contract with the Royal Oak Education Association, which is a three-year contract, which would go through the end of the school year of 2028. The ROEA is our largest of four bargaining units. There are 386 employees represented by this contract, which is essentially all of our instructional staff, as you know. And I just, I want to echo what Grat Dalton said. It was a very collaborative process. We really get along. I think we, in addition to those beliefs we all share, we all wanted a good contract for the ROEA. It's critically important to have a good contract that will attract and retain our staff. And then we have to figure out how to afford that, certainly. But that was our common goal, is to come up with a contract that we felt good about and that the teachers felt good about. And I think we arrived at that. And I want to also acknowledge in the audience is, well, the MEA Executive Director who spoke, Grat Dalton, who we love working with. Marion Campbell, the past president of the ROEA, joined us, graced us this evening. Kerry Dermeyer, the current president of the ROEA, who worked tirelessly on this, by the way. And the Vice President Mallory Greenway. It's just, I just want to say on behalf of our team, it was a pleasure working with you, and I appreciate it. And that for your approval is item 8.4.2, unless you have any questions.
Do we have a motion for 8.4.2? Trustee Cook.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby ratifies the collectively bargained and tentatively agreed-upon master agreement with the Royal Oak Education Association effective July 10, 2025, through July 9, 2028.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Jazinski. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Trustee Van Heitzma.
Well, I would just like to echo everybody's thanks. I know the teams worked pretty aggressively. And hearing Grat lay out the goals, I think, was just such a positive statement to start, you know, contract negotiation. So, I think I'm really grateful for that. And I'm glad that our goals align. I'm glad our visions align. And I think, and hope with the ratification of this by the members, is that it's the recognition of how we value our staff, how important they are to us. And I cannot say enough about the appreciation of our staff. So, just thank you for all your efforts on those who worked on this contract, and I'm really grateful for it. So, thank you.
Trustee Wiki.
Yeah, I'll say this again as a new board member. I was a little worried starting this year because we had all of our contracts up for renegotiation. And from my perspective, it's gone really smoothly. So, I mean, all the groups that were involved in the contract negotiations, and Mr. Wolinski, my understanding is led that effort. Just thanks so much for your work, your hard work, and how smooth it appears to have gone.
I had a lot of help from Ms. Bella and Dr. Ioannis, and we march right down to Ms. Fitzpatrick's office after every time we met. So, a very collaborative effort.
I just want to thank the team from the district and from the ROEA. Talking to school board colleagues throughout the county and the state and friends that I have in labor, we are very lucky to have the relationship that we have between both sides. And that's not the case everywhere, and it gets really ugly really fast sometimes. So, I'm really appreciative of the relationship that we have on both sides of the table. And thank you all for your involvement.
Thank you. So, pretty fitting that it's my last meeting, and I could not be more proud of our team, period. I won't look at Grat Dalton because we had exchanged some thanks and goodbyes and things the other evening. But I will say that, you know, again, as Mr. Wiki pointed out, we looked ahead at what was before us in this second semester of the school year. And we're facing some pretty big challenges, and we have been. But I was, I love the process. I am very proud that not only do we have a three-year contract, we have a three-year calendar for our community, for our teachers and families. We were able to work in some other things to the contract, which I think are mutually beneficial. It is about the money and the wages, and we want to attract and retain staff, but we also want to be mindful of the other conditions of the document, that agreement, that support both district initiatives and support our staff. And we're all here for the students. But it's just very fitting for me that this is one of the last things that I can be a part of in the district. So, I'm really proud. And thank you to our team and our collaboration with all four of our units. And the team sitting to my left, they worked all the time. And not only did they work at getting ready for every meeting, is they were very ready from the beginning because we've been working on these processes since September. Like, we knew it was coming, and we wanted to be prepared. And we knew we also had a full-time job to do all day long with our students and families. So, again, my thanks and real proud moment for me. Thank you to the team and to our staff and the audience.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? See no call for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Also, I didn't realize the agenda this evening did not have a portion for our student reps. Do you have anything else to report other than what you've said already? Maybe wouldn't think you're going to be so dedicated you would spend your summer vacation with us. Wani never shies away.
School's back the 25th of August. It's earlier than last year. Please don't forget. Don't come back later. My friend did that last year. It was on accident.
I hope all of our students have a great summer, and I'll see you all next year.
Thank you. This brings to item nine this evening, which is public comment. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to address the board? Sinan, moving on to item 10, which is board comments and liaison reports. There were no committee meetings since our last meeting. We have no board reports from any committees, but we'll open it up to board liaison or comments. Trustee Jazinski.
You kind of flew through your board presentation of your recognition of Superintendent Fitzpatrick. And I know, like you said, we have, like, a lot of goodbyes and laughs and all of those things. But, you know, while we are here on record and that this is your last official meeting, I just have to express a huge amount of thanks to the way that you have set us up and guided us over the last couple of years. I'm sure that when you took this position, you could have never imagined the handful of years that were ahead of you and the challenges that we have in public education and as a community. I think just on a personal note, the thing that I admire the most about you is that you have, that you are so true to always constantly being an educator, and that I really, really value. And I think comes through in all of the decisions that you help us make. So, I'll cry like Mary Ann. I just, yeah, it's just, this is an emotional process for all of us. We're so proud of where we're at. We know that things are going to be challenging, but I just am really, really honored to serve our community and have worked with you. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Trustee Anderson.
Oh, no, we're all going to cry now. Mary Ann? No, so, always, we value you and everything that you've done for our district, and you're leaving an amazing legacy here. So, thank you.
Trustee Van Heitzma.
Really, I'm not going to say too much because I will, in fact, cry. But now maybe people will call me Mary Ann instead of Mary Beth. You never know. But, you know, I was part of the process when we hired Mary Beth, Deb and I were. And, you know, we just never, you know, it was such an amazing process that we went through, brought you onboard, and you immediately engaged. And, you know, we made it through COVID. We made it through just challenges across the board, but always with that vision, again, of education and student-first, staff-first, I think is really important in your level of community engagement, right? Always, in attendance, always, you know, board members and leaders of community organizations because you realized how important that was for community school, for, to be part of our, to help keep people engaged within our schools, I think is really amazing. So, I wish you the best.
Hey, anybody else? Anything from this side of the table?
I have to say something, of course. And I already heard my colleagues here grumbling, but I just want to thank Superintendent Fitzpatrick. I'm sorry. Like, it's been three years you've worked with me. At this point, you know, something has to be said. So, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Fitzpatrick for all of her leadership in the eight years that she's been in this district. From her first year while I was working at Adams, she was very supportive of the leadership opportunities that she provided me then to gain some district leadership experience. And then the last three years have been phenomenal, having the opportunity to work with you and learn from you. And you've definitely taught me a lot. And I know that, I've talked to you about this before, but your voice will continue to be in my head moving forward. And I will listen to it, even if you're not around, to give me the look and the nod and the Joseph. Because when she says Joseph, then, you know, I got to refocus on something. So, thank you again for your guidance and your leadership, and we'll definitely miss you. And we know that you'll be around still, and we'll find ways to connect and continue to get help and support as needed. Thank you.
Feel like I was called on there. I refuse to cry, Mary Beth. It has been a pleasure working with you for eight years. Your leadership, your mentorship, your friendship. I'm certainly going to miss you.
I'll be very brief. I've known Mary Beth the longest. She was, she was my children's elementary school principal, and she was beloved in that role. I really did love her in that role. And then she, years later, became our superintendent, and I have loved working with her in that role. I will tell you, I will attest to how hard she has worked. She has worked very hard to serve this community. And I didn't ever want her job. I had a front row seat to it. And it's a very hard job. And it's just been great working with you. And I was joking that we're going to keep in touch. We'll see each other socially, but I'm sure I'll just continue to do whatever she tells me to do in those settings.
Anything else from the board table? See no other business in front of this body? We are adjourned at 7:20.